Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Town area School District meeting. It's Tuesday in April 26th. Pretty straightforward agenda tonight, so we'll start right now. We'll start moving forward. First, we'll go to call to order. And roll call.
Ms. Dieroff.
President.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mrs. Scott. Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Okay. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Moving forward, we go to the previous executive sessions. There were no previous executive sessions. And now at this point, we'll move to public comment number one. Let me read off the required reading for that public comment number one. On behalf of the school board directors, I would like to, I would welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us in making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyertown Area School District. The procedure and rules for public participation are detailed in BSAD Policy 006. This document is available at this meeting and on the BSAD website. Participants properly registered on the sign up sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preference their comments by announcement of their name and group affiliation if appropriate. All statements, inquiries, and comments should be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of public individually. Note that we value will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside of the realm of public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Mrs. Torshis or a member of her staff, we'll be in contact with you to confirm your questions and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak for a second time if there is time left in 30 minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board in committee meetings. We post them on YouTube with a link to our website. We request that if you wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, do so in a non disruptive and discreet manner and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. I only see one person. Anybody sign up? Did anybody sign up in the back? Okay. Donna U. Savage.
What is topic?
Topic is treasurer's reports.
Hi. Donna U. Savage from Upper Frederick Township. Sorry I missed your last meeting. I'll try not to let that happen again. I see that you're approving all monthly treasurer's reports from July 2021 through March 2022 tonight. These treasurer's reports are the only tool you have for being fiscally responsible and monitoring the operation of our school district. I do have some questions that I'll look for a response offline, and here they are. Am I correct to assume that because this is the first time these monthly treasurer's reports are being presented at a board meeting, that that means you haven't had the opportunity to see, discuss among yourselves, and ask questions about the financial operation of our district for most of a year? And why are all but the March reports marked as final when you haven't yet approved them? I respectfully request an answer to these two questions offline, and thank you for giving me the time to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Mrs. U. Savage, can you provide me your questions?
Yes, I have a.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to approval of the minutes.
Dieroff, please.
The latter seconds. Roll call, please.
Hey, Jim. Would you mind repeating you first and you second so that?
You second and?
Dieroff was first.
That's right. Ms. Dieroff was first and Mrs. Zawada was second. Okay.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now we'll turn it over to Mrs. Torshis.
All right. Thank you. The best part of the meeting. All right. I have the pleasure tonight to feature three members of the class of 2022 as part of our senior spotlight, and we're going to start with congratulations to Cassandra Hager. Is Cassandra here? Okay. Mrs. Morecki had this to say about Cassandra. Cassie is a student leader involved in many areas within our school and community. She is a lifeguard and swim instructor at the YMCA, a volleyball player, a member of the FCA, and an officer of the National Honor Society. As an NHS officer, Cassie has taken on many responsibilities from designing the shirts to chairing kindergarten Read Across America at Colbrookdale and bear room service at BASH. She is also working on induction. She is a bright, shining personality that works hard to demonstrate that while doing the right thing isn't always easy, it can be done with grace. And next, we're proud to feature Jamalia Egby. Is Jamalia here? Okay. And Jamalia was also selected by Mrs. Morecki, who said Jamalia saw a need for change and ran with it. Along with Maya Jones, she created an updated presentation for Black History Month that was displayed on the BASH TV news screens. Since the creation of that project, Jamalia has created an influential Women's History Month presentation that scrolled throughout the month of March. It is with thought and planning that she identifies people of different cultures for various contributions. She is participating in the National Poetry Month presentation for April and is looking for students to carry on this work while she attends NYU next year. And finally, we are pleased to introduce Charlotte Chadwick. Charlotte? Okay. Charlotte is being recognized by Mr. Chakowski, who had this to say. Charlotte is one of our telecom student interns. Charlotte and I met during the first semester to discuss a project to update our communications about Boyertown School District's video and mission. She has worked diligently to create and edit a video that includes clips, images, and examples from around the district to highlight what it means to be a Boyertown Bear. Tonight, we are proud to share her work with all of you. So, Mr. Stout.
Our vision is to cultivate an exceptional, learning community that enables all students to succeed in a changing world. Our mission is for all students to be future ready. By meeting or exceeding established goals, Boyertown Area School District will implement coordinated, articulated curriculum and provide personalized training instruction
Charlotte's work is now featured on the district website, and congratulations to all of you on a job well done. Great job. Next, I have the honor to introduce the BASH Academic Challenge Team, who are sitting right up front, I think, and we might have one person in the row behind. No, just you guys all up front. All right. I knew you all came together. All right. So tonight, we are proud to introduce BASH's Academic Challenge Team. Mr. Josh Turner, math department leader at BASH, is the club's advisor, and his team consists of Casey Grass? Casey? No. Brayden King? Cameron Kratz? Cole Kratz? Josh, Joshua Lucinski? I know. Your name I keep practicing over and over again. Mark Longenberger and Michael Perry. All right. Here's what we have to say. BASH's Academic Challenge Club is very similar to a quiz ball team. We compete against the other schools in Berks County in a league run through the BCIU. Each school plays four regular season matches, and the teams that win the most and score the highest numbers of correct answers advance to the playoff round. The questions run the gamut of the school curriculum, current events, literature, ELLA, social studies, history, science, and math. The teams of students may confer during the question, but the first team to ring in and answer correctly earns the point. In that regard, academic challenge is similar to Jeopardy. Not only do the students need to know the answer, but they also need to be quick enough to beat their opponent to the buzzer. Each of the two rounds consists of 10 toss-up questions, followed by the sixth question, Fan Fair Round, where the team competes together to arrive at correct answers. In Fan Fair, each team answers each question, and both teams can earn points for being correct. At the end of the two rounds, the team with the higher score is declared the winner. Our team won each of our first two matches this season and had forfeit victories in the final two matches. We entered the playoff bracket as the number two seed as we had lower points overall, thanks to the forfeits. We beat Fleetwood, Exeter, and Wilson to become Berks County champions for the second time in Mr. Turner's tenure. The team travels to Harrisburg on Friday to compete for the state championship in the capital. Do you guys have anything to share? I wish, I couldn't come up with any academic challenge questions. I don't know if I have any other. Maybe Mr. Sultanic could come up with a question, you know, for you all. See if you can answer it, and we can time you. But what a great accomplishment. I immediately got, received information from the executive director from the Berks County Intermediate Unit, alerting me that our team had won. So when working with Mrs. Moore, we wanted to bring you in and acknowledge you, and it just so happens that this is the week. You're leaving. You're out of here. Out of here for a day. Are you staying at the Capitol for the weekend? Is it? No, just for the day? Up and back? All right. No tours? Nothing like that? All right. Have you been studying, practicing? Like, you know, what do you do to prepare for this?
Practice once a week. I have to do it kind of on my own time. We'll look up stuff online and it's kind of something we like to do all the time.
Okay. Is there major competition between the brothers?
It depends everything.
Really? Are you the, are you the older, you know, brother? Is that why the younger is? Are you younger? Are you guys brothers? No, wait. No, wait. I'm sorry. All right. I'm not. I'll stop. All right. You're twins.
One's still older.
By a moment, you know. Okay. There you go. So therefore, you let the younger one win. Right. Yeah. So, okay. Exactly. All right. Anything else to add? All right. Well, we'll bring you back, and we'll have some kind of a treat for you once you come back with the state championship. How's that? All right. Great. Well, thank you for coming out. We really appreciate it, and we wish you the best of luck. Any of the other members, I'll be quiet now.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And you may feel welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you may take this moment and leave. It's entirely up to you guys. Or maybe you want to listen to the student, you know, board report, and then?
Thanks for putting us on the spot, Ms. Torshis. Good evening, boarding and community members. Sarah and I are back from spring break, ready to give you a report of the events happening in the district. This report will be a little shorter because of the spring break happening in the middle of the month, but we'll handle all the important information.
Absolutely. So to start off this report, we'll talk about the successful musical Oklahoma that was held at BASH, the audiences were very pleased by BASH's performance. People really enjoyed seeing the students' report after two crazy years, and on behalf of the soon population, we want to congratulate the cast and crew on a successful and wonderful performance.
Perfect. Prom is right around the corner for Boyertown seniors. Prom registration wrapped up right before spring break, and there will be over 500 students attending. In addition, juniors are preparing for their senior class trip, and the first payment was due last week. Very exciting things happening at the high school.
In addition, the middle schools and elementary school students are preparing for PSSA testing. We wish them the best of luck on their testing, and Middle School East is holding rehearsals for students selected by the Berks Junior County Orchestra. We wish them luck for students auditioning.
Next, the Boyertown community held a coming out of hibernation event. It was a very, it was a great community event for people in Boyertown with businesses or programs to come out and tell the community about what they do. It had a great turnout, and some Boyertown school teams and programs had tables there. Everyone seemed to have a really good time and enjoyed being out in the community again. And that is all we have, and thank you for your time.
And I'm just going to add. Good job, girl. So Sarah is our outgoing senior board rep. Your last meeting will be our last meeting in May, correct? And she will be, we will have a new junior coming in? And that will be what? Lexi Pacino? Is that? Okay. So just letting everybody know that Sarah's going to be leaving us at the end of May. So, and we know that she's going to Happy Valley, to Penn State University. Very good. So we'll celebrate you a little bit more next month.
Next, we'll go to a budget update.
Thank you. Tonight, I'll be giving a presentation in regards to the 2022-23 budget, the outlook, and the remaining timeline before June 30th. I'm going to review the budgetary goals, again, review our Act One index, provide a couple tax increase scenarios, give an update on the overall general fund budget, give some ideas for our future years' planning that are in place, and then our next budgetary steps. Our budgetary goals remain at maintaining our educational offerings. We would like to increase enrollment with our own cyber program. We'd like to explore options for better serving the needs of our students. We continue to prepare for some facility planning, and we want to spend within the means our community can support. The Act One index for 2022-23 for Boyertown is 4.2%, and our history again ranged from about 2.1% up to the high of 4.2% that we were at for 2022-23. The tax increase scenarios and the revenue impact that they have, it's important to note that historically, as the district has raised taxes above or to the index, it actually decreased the collection percentage of the tax levy. So this inverse relationship actually generated decreased revenue for the district, even though they raised to the index and above, the collection percentage actually dropped. A drop of 1% in collection can actually have a very significant impact on the revenue generated. If we would for 2022-23 levy a 0% tax increase and remain at 29.046 mils, we would collect roughly $78.1 million in real estate tax revenue. At a 3% increase, it would raise the millage rate to 29.917 mils, and we would collect roughly $81.4 million in real estate tax revenue. As we would increase to 3.5% or 4.2%, based upon the district's historical experience, we could have a decreased collection rate of 1% or more. So at a 1% decrease collection rate, the revenue generated by 3.5% would be 80 million, 80.1 million. For 4.2%, it would be 80.7 million. Both at 4.2 and 3.5% is actually less than a 3% tax increase. Anytime you're raising, continuing to raise and going above the index or to the index, and I looked at district historical information, as you started to raise, as the district started to raise higher and higher, the collection, the ability for people to pay, was actually decreasing. So it had a negative effect on the revenue collection of the district. We are at a 98% collection rate for the current fiscal year. That is tremendous community support. Coupled with inflationary pressures that we ourselves are facing, which is the need for a tax increase, we also have to manage what our own community is facing and understand that if we could, if we would raise to the index, they very likely wouldn't be able to make those payments, and we would actually have decreased collections. So that kind of gives you the overall scenario of where we would be at the different tax The general fund budget as it stands today, April 26th, local revenue is slated at $93,856,893. That's based upon a 3% tax increase. State revenue is at $37,867,528. That number may fluctuate up and down depending on what happens with the governor's budget proposal. Federal revenue is $1,674,200 for total revenue of $133,398,621. Our expenditures, salaries and benefits, being the highest, $90,184,252. Contracted services, $32,106,771. Supplies and utilities, $5,809,797. And then our debt service and any fund transfers, $8,136,085 for total expenditures of $136,236,905. Now, that does show a use of fund balance of $2,838,284. That is an alarming number for many. However, we do have unassigned fund balance available to utilize to offset this revenue shortfall. When you're trying to balance a budget in the public sector, you cannot make large cuts in one year to make up for continued deficits. We have, within this budget, we have had a number of retirements that we are proposing not to fill, as we feel we have, you know, adequate teachers and professional staff to continue to maintain all of our programming. We are taking steps each year to get us to a point of a balanced budget. We know it's a combination of both increasing revenue and decreasing expenses. You can't just pull one lever, and we are, we are doing both of those things. Our fund balance history, our unassigned fund balance, you will see in, at the end of 2020, it was $11.4 million. At the end of 2021, it is at $10.7 million. So from PDE standards, a healthy fund balance, however, $10.7 million fund balance wouldn't get you through two months of expenditures. So we need to be mindful in using fund balance, however, not be afraid to utilize fund balance if we are future planning appropriately and know that we can make expenditure adjustments in future years to decrease the amount of usage of fund balance. The district is also limited to 8% of its expenditures. They can hold no more than 8% in the fund balance, in the unassigned fund balance, and we are within those limits. As we look to future years beyond 2022 and 23, we are reviewing some bond refunding opportunities. Our 2014 and 2015 general obligation bonds have call dates in 2023 and 2024. A call date means they would be eligible for refunding. Our investment advisors will be providing the board a presentation on May 10th regarding what the market is looking like for a potential advanced refunding. And then if the board so chooses, they would present a parameters resolution on May 24th. The parameters resolution would state that if certain savings targets are met, that they could lock the district into a refunding opportunity. I don't believe, based upon the current market factors, it would be half a million dollars of savings that we could get in our debt service, but it might be $150,000 in debt service savings that we could look at. So that's something that we're looking at in the future, bond refunding opportunities. We constantly evaluate to see if we can lower our interest costs. We will continue to analyze our largest expenditures, salaries, and benefits. We will look at plan design options of our employee benefits to determine if there's a more cost effective solution for the district and its employees. As we look to external cyber charter enrollment, we're not looking to just wish away that the people are attending external cyber charters. We are really focused on understanding what those external cyber charter schools are offering our parents and building a model that can compete with that. Our enrollment in those schools has grown tremendously. If we dropped our pre-pandemic level, we could save $2.5 million annually. So any adjustment we can do in our external cyber charter enrollment to bring those students back into our district, back into our community, can have a very positive effect on our bottom line, and I think a more positive effect for our own students. So it's looking at what are they offering? What can we offer to compete with them? Taking a look at the course offerings of the external cyber charter schools and comparing it to what we offer, and demonstrating that we may have stronger offerings, and really starting to promote ourselves just like those external cyber charter schools do. So we're not, we're looking at 22-23, but we're looking to 23-24 and years beyond to determine how can we drive these expenditures down and still maintain our offerings and maybe enhance our offerings. There will be a number of more budget presentations as we go through June 30th. The proposed final budget we will place on the May 10th agenda for approval. Once that proposed final budget is adopted, would be adopted, we can make any and all changes to that budget. It's just a step in the process as established by PDE that we have to pass a proposed final, but we can make changes to those numbers up to and including the date of the final budget adoption, which would be slated for June 28th. We must pass by June 30th according to Pennsylvania guidelines. And that's it. That's a lot of information. We will have more budget information shared with the board at every meeting upcoming, and we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. You said the PDE standards for a healthy fund balance are what was? What did you? I'm sorry. Could you?
We cannot exceed 8% in unassigned fund balance. So we cannot have a fund balance that's higher than 8% of our expenditures.
Right. Okay.
And undesigned.
Undesigned. Okay. And then I know last year we were talking about savings through bringing kids back into our cyber program. Did we meet those goals?
That number has been fluctuating. The enrollment numbers have been fluctuating throughout the year. As we get to our final year, we'll have a better idea of just how much we were able to save.
Do you know, like, a rough estimate, or?
I don't have that at this time. I can get that.
Okay. I appreciate it. And then the spots not being filled through attrition, are they teacher spots?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah. There's teacher positions. There's a multitude of positions that we're evaluating as they are coming up for retirement.
So what will that do to our class sizes?
Well, as we analyze our enrollment over the past years compared to the total professional staff we have, the total classroom teachers that we have, if we look back over the last four or five years, it does not change the per, the number of students per teacher, the number of students per professional staff. Professional staff would include guidance counselors and other people that are part of that bargaining unit.
But in answer your question, we are not looking at raising class size numbers at the elementary. We have bubble classrooms that have been in place, and we know that those bubble classrooms will be moving away, and there's nothing leading up to them. So we've done an analysis of what our numbers will look like at that elementary level, specifically. Middle and high school, those numbers have been sitting on the lower side in some cases. So if we don't replace, you know, a subject area, it will not have, you know, impact as far as class sizes. It's just going to. It's just going to, um, well, I, I'd lie. It, it's going to impact class sizes, but it's going to make it more relative to what an elementary class might have. More in the twenty five, um, twenty six, twenty seven range, especially for the upper grade levels.
And would these, um, would the loss of these positions create any like loss of program? So would we, we're not going to be cutting any classes?
We are not cutting any program or offerings at this time, no.
Okay, and then I guess my other concern about that would be that um, I know in the high school, there were periods, and it's been happening for years, so it's not just, you know, it's just, um, with, it's difficult to get subs, and then kids end up in um, large holding rooms, I, for lack of a better, like auditoriums. That was a weird way to say it. Auditoriums, you know, for one or two classes a day, which is really not, I mean, it seems, would that, would it have an impact on that?
Well, it would be less teachers that would be calling out sick, and, and that we would have to have coverage for, or, or less teachers that would be taking personal days. So um, I don't believe that, you know, the, the shortage of substitutes and teachers is going to impact us, you know, however it may, as we go into the, you know, next school year. Um, we have been working very diligently with getting, you know, better fill rates, you know, utilizing the services that we have then. Um, you know, we're doing the best that, you know, we can, just like many other school districts, you know, across the,
Yeah.
the United States really, so.
So you think that the, the impacts would be felt mostly in the middle and high school with larger class sizes that are more?
That, that would, the, the class sizes will definitely go up. We're going to be, you know, reducing the number of, you know, biology classes being, you know, condensing them, um, you know, without having those numbers in front of me, I can't tell you exactly how they're going to change, but I know that we're still going to be within the twenties. We're not looking at thirty, forty, fifty, you know, students being in a classroom.
Okay.
Yeah.
But class sizes will not rise in the elementary?
They should not rise. Now, I can't promise you that because I can't tell you what enrollment will happen over the summertime, so please, you know, at, at the way that we're projecting and the numbers that we're using and what we've always used as a pattern for projection, we're not anticipating classes to be any larger than what they look like this year. And it, and as far as your cyber question, we do know that more students are returning back even from our own cyber program back into school. So that's a very good thing as well.
But it could also.
Um, I, we're seeing it right now happening, so we know what to anticipate for next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Hogan, I would just say it, we've really looked at, it's a more efficient use of our resources versus cutting things. We're really looking to just more efficiently use the resources that we have.
Okay, Mr. Updegrove.
I would say um, about. There?
I thought it was around five.
Yeah, yeah. So mid, five, I'm hearing between five hundred and four and five hundred and thirty, depending on who would really be walking. Yeah.
What about the upcoming class, eleventh graders now coming to twelfth grade? What do you, what's your number there as far as seniors next year?
I would have to look. I think they're right around five hundred, and um, I can get that information for you, Mr. Updegrove. I just don't have that pulled up on my screen right now.
Any other questions?
It's not my real question, it's something that's just going to get back to you all, but I, I would like to see what the four point two would look like if everyone hypothetically paid their taxes, and I'd like to see the information, like the back taxes that show that that would be a trend that we're in, if you could show me that. All right, thanks.
Anything else?
Just to answer Mr. Updegrove's question, so currently in our twelfth grade, according to our March first enrollment, um, and that would be students that are sitting in our classrooms, we have four hundred and fifty seven twelfth graders. Um, again, I'm not sure how many students are in our cyber program, so that's where the, the difference could be. I'm sure it's probably that difference to take us up to five hundred. And the um, eleventh grade class moving into twelfth grade, right now there are four hundred and fifty seven students sitting in that class. Um, that would be moving up. And again, I know that that number is probably higher because of the number of students who are out in our virtual academy.
Okay, but for up to same ten or then, you're, you're figuring about five hundred?
Yes.
And that includes cyber and?
That, everybody that's a senior and has eligibility to walk and participate in graduation, yes. You're welcome.
Okay, then with that, we'll move on.
Good evening, everyone. The treasurer's report is year to date through March twenty twenty two. For local revenue, eighty seven point three million, which includes real estate tax collection. And I'm happy to report that we are at a ninety eight percent collection rate on that. For state revenue, twenty two point oh four million, which includes subsidies of nine point two million in basic ed, three point four million in Peasars reimbursement, and three million in special education. In regards to expenditures, salaries and benefits, which make up our largest expenditures, are at fifty five point oh four million year to date through March, and this concludes the treasurer's report. Thank you.
I would just like to add on the treasurer's reports. Historically, the district's reports have been manually prepared in Excel. With the implementation of our new system, those, the new system is a real time system. Transactions are posted every single day at any given moment. We can look and see where we're at financially. Um, these, all of the board reports now come directly out of the financial system. So there's no room for human error, human um, miskeying something inadvertently. Everything comes out of the system and every account is reconciled within the system. Um, in our older system, things were reconciled outside of the system, so sometimes you might have had an account reconciliation that didn't match the numbers that were in your system. That, those things have been eliminated through our new software implementation. So we are in a, um, much stronger financial reporting position.
Would you consider it a more transparent system?
Absolutely. We can um, drill down to the finest level of data very easily. We can um, add more data to what we're reporting. We can make sure that we have controls into place that will automatically flag something if it doesn't align. Um, there are many, many um, improvements within the system. We can stop spending um, immediately when a budget goes over, um, so that's a very strong control. Uh, the approvals are all now electronically, so you can clearly see who has approved what, and if something would go over budget, we would have a clear track to um, analyze that and address that. Uh, the most important thing, and as a former auditor, I can say this, the most important thing is that the reconciliations are now within the system. So you're not reconciling something against a number that might not be represented in your system. And that was a severe um, audit risk, in my opinion. The other um, risk was if you have financial reports that are being manually created, errors can inadvertently happen. So you may not have been seeing something that was represented within the accounting records. Um, with the new reporting, it comes directly out of the system. We simply print the reports, and that's, we don't do any manipu- manipulation to them at this point. So it's a much more robust system than what the district had in the past. It took a lot of time to set it up. We did, you know, take account numbers, get them in compliance with school code. There were a lot, a lot of improvements that were late in, made throughout this past year. A lot of new procedures that were um, shared with the staff in regards to putting controls into place and making everything go within the system and kind of getting away from the paper aspect of the reporting.
Go ahead, Ms. Nyman.
Thank you. Um, Ms. D'Nicol, I do appreciate the job you've done. However, I do have some questions and concerns. Uh, Mr. Shoftani, is there a timeline in which we need to have these um, reports in? Like we're doing nine months here at One Shot.
Which reports are you talking about?
The treasurer's, treasurer's reports. The monthly reports.
Um, we just have to approve them. I don't believe the code specifies a timeline per se.
Okay, thank you. Uh, when did this new system come in, Mrs. D'Nicol?
We started the implementation of this system about a year ago. Um, but the, the steps involved were, to transition the data over, to create the new procedures, create the reports. Um, it was a time intensive um, project. However, we, we're seeing the um, fruits of our labor, so to speak, at this point. Um, because we have put the controls in place, we have the reporting that will now come out every month. Um, it just took some time to get all that um, back, the backup and the, the strategic pieces in place to allow that reporting to occur.
The only reason I'm questioning is because there's been some talk out there as to about this whole thing. And I knew there were reasons for it, and people did not want to discuss it. They wanted it in writing. And I said, you know, I'm not putting it in writing. I will discuss anything with anybody anytime. Uh, so thank you for that, Mrs. D'Nicol, and hopefully this proves to be worth its money in gold for us. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, so basically, you could actually pull daily, as we call it, you know, a doc. So we can see where we're standing, where we're falling behind that we need to know, you know, or something came over budget. So other members of the board that are deemed into that area could be attached into those reports.
Absolutely. Um, I will give you a, for instance, of data that we could, that was not housed in the system priorly. All of the payroll charges, when you're paying the IRS, paying everything withheld, none of that was actually tied to a vendor record. So you can look at the Internal Revenue Serv- Service vendor record and see what payments you made. There was paper to support the payments that were made, but nothing was formalized, nothing was in the system. One of the other big um, inconsistencies, in my opinion, were the charter school costs. The charter schools automatically deduct from our subsidy for payment. Um, however, they should be recorded in the system and tied to those charter schools, so you can adequately reconcile that they were billing you for what they should have been, and the payments that they received were appropriate. All of that has been corrected. Now, every payment um, that is issued is tied to a vendor. Whether it be an automatic payment, some of the payments are automatic, they are all represented in the system. Wire transfers, all represented in the system. So a lot of those things, and it's not to say that anybody was doing anything wrong before, it was just an old archaic system. That has all been corrected. We can drill down to a vendor, we can at any given time run a report and get real time, up to date information.
I got one more question. Um, on our special students like that, IEPs and that, and they go to other schools. How do we bill them when they do not, or how do they bill us when they do not show up?
Mary Beth, you might be able to. They bill us for the days.
By each student not showing up at that school that day?
We're billed for daily attendance, so eh, there's an attendance that is taken each day, and then we get weekly attendance reports, and then we are only billed for the time that they are in session.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any, any other questions? Okay, with that, let's move on. Uh, I think the next is the secretary's report. Yeah, motion, motion to approve the treasurer's reports. Dioroff moves.
Ms. Dioroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Ms. Nyman? Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now I can move on to secretary's report.
No additional report this evening.
Uh, next is solicitor's report?
No report.
And now the superintendent's report.
I have a report. All right, I have, um, looking for the approval of the consent agenda. Um, we will be looking for approval for the overnight trips, bid awards for supplies for twenty twenty two, creation of student activity account for the environmental club treasury account, solicitor appointment for fiscal year twenty two, twenty twenty three, resolution of abandonment of employment, and um, I am looking for the board of school de- dis- board of school directors to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Hogan moves.
Roll call?
Ms. Dioroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
I'm going to abstain for the reason that there's one on there that I want it pulled, and it's not being pulled. So I'm going to abstain for that reason.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, under um, the superintendent's report itemized agenda, uh, we have personnel, and I'm looking for the board of school directors to approve the personal, personnel agenda as presented.
Hogan moves.
Ho- Ms. Hogan move, Stieroff second. Roll call?
Ms. Dioroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That completes my report, Mr. Brophy.
Okay, next we move to old business. Next we move to public comment period number two. Let me read the uh, okay, on behalf of the school board of directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your, we welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us in making recommendations decisions related to the board ten area of school district. This, this procedure and rules. Procedure and rules for public participation are detailed in the BSAD policy board oh oh six. This document is available at this meeting and on behalf of the website. Uh, participants properly registered to sign up sheet will be recognized with the presiding officer. Public comment period number two is for those persons wishing to discuss an item not appearing on the E V's agenda. Participants must preface, preface their comments by announcement of their name and group affiliation if appropriate. All statements, inquiries and comments should be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or request board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of the public meeting if you have a concern about the individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Mrs. Torsho or a member of her staff will contact you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment periods are limited to thirty minutes. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings, and we post them on YouTube with a link to our website. We're impressed if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non disruptive and discreet manner and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. I believe we only have one person signed up for public speaking number two. Is there any, any additional signups?
No.
Okay, and this would be Donnie Savage. Learn my municipality is Upper Frederick.
Hi, Donnie Savage. This is part three on board effectiveness. I spoke to you on February twenty second about bias, and again on March twenty second about the importance of communication. Tonight's board effectiveness topic is learning. Public cooperation and governance is extremely complex, and board effectiveness is critical to the future of our students and our entire community. One very influential Boyer Town School Board Director, upon leaving the board upon leaving the board after seventeen years, said she was still learning something about the job every day. And Albert Einstein said, "Any fool can know, the point is to understand." Fortunately for you, there are many opportunities to learn. PSBA comes to mind first because you should all be getting a daily email newsletter. The contents include news about current public education issues and announcement about training offerings, most of them free, and virtual or on-demand. One offering that stands out for me is the monthly exchange, which allows you to learn about a current issue, then discuss it with other school board directors across the state. There's also an annual conference. The BCIU, the intermediate unit, also offers training opportunities and an annual conference of Berks County School Directors. And there are a myriad of other sources nationally and locally for educating yourselves. While learning should be something you do voraciously on your own in this role, according to law, which is Act 55 of 2017, newly elected and appointed school board directors are required to complete five hours of approved training, and re-elected school board directors must complete three hours. And board secretaries are required to maintain a copy of each director's certificates of training completed in order to provide proof of compliance of this requirement. I'd like to know, as a question for follow-up, what training has each board member taken and are they currently in compliance with Act 55 of 2017? At your last meeting, you approved updates to Policy 004, Membership, which reiterates the Act 55 training requirements and emphasizes the high priority placed on board education and training. Um, it states, "The board, in conjunction with the superintendent, shall plan specific in-service education programs and activities designed to assist school directors to improve their skills as policymaking leaders, expand their knowledge about issues, et cetera, and deepen their insights into the nature of..."
Thirty seconds, please.
"...of leadership, governance, and community engagement." I'd like to know, as questions for follow-up, what specific in-service education programs have taken place since July 1st, 2021, and what programs are planned? What level of funding is dedicated to school board director training? And how will the school community be kept informed about the board's training plans and progress per your Policy 004? I respectfully request answers to these questions offline.
Time.
Thank you for listening tonight.
Okay, let's move on to board comments. I'll start around with Mr. Uh, Mr. Updegrove. Ms. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Um, so congratulations to all of our seniors in tonight's senior spotlight. Um, congratulations to the Abash academic team, such an achievement. Um, thanks to them for representing us so excellently within the state and best of luck in the capital. Very exciting. Um, thank you, as always, to Olivia and Sarah for your amazing, wonderful reports. I will miss you very much, Sarah, when you leave us. But I'm so happy to, you know, see you go off and continue to grow. Um, I saw Oklahoma and it was amazing, really, really well done, so. Um, and then I just wanted to comment, um, about the PSBA monthly exchanges. So I actually, I've been going to them for the past, oh, I missed it this month, but I was going for the past couple of months. And they are really helpful, um, and, and useful. And it's great to hear from other board members who do what we do. So I found them useful. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Zawada.
Um, I basically wanna, it's great when we come here in the evening and we realize how far now the school districts come since the pandemic. We have these great kids that have fallen right back into step and are doing one heck of a job. And it's really neat to have them and something we can tote. And I don't know, I don't play into press releases, but it should be something that maybe we should look at into our weekly papers or patch or something like that and show the other school districts, ha-ha. Um, I do want to thank, uh, the seniors and the, and also our young ladies to my right. They're doing a great job. Um, I do feel that, um, just to give heads up, that basically every one of us that are sitting at this table are required by law or the Pennsylvania Department of Education to pass our certifications within two months of being sworn in. So we've all taken our tests. The, all, all the, um, certificates are where they're supposed to be. So, and, uh, so I don't think it's a non-issue. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
In, in agreement with you, Mrs. Zawada, two things. One is, last year's graduation, I got to see all the kids and parents in one place, which was great. This year I get to see their smiling faces and their parents in one place. I think that's a, as we, as we keep moving forward, that's, that's where we want to go.
Yeah, I look forward to going to my first graduation.
You'll love it. Mr. Panarello.
I want to congratulate the Abash Academic Challenge Team, all the seniors who were highlighted in the spotlight tonight. Olivia and Sarah for doing a great job on the student report, as always. And last but not least, all our juniors and seniors who were inducted into National Honor Society this weekend.
Mr. Hemingway.
Uh, keep us moving with no comment.
Okay, Mrs. Dearoff.
Okay, I agree with all the thank yous and praises everybody gave tonight, so I'm gonna not repeat. Uh, but I'm going to say that I'm a little disappointed in some of my colleagues. We're all worried about the budget. Uh, first of all, I think Ms. D'Nicol has did a wonderful job with her presentation. Um, there's nobody that shouldn't be able to understand it, uh, the way she presents it, like, you know, before, where some people had difficulty. And, uh, I, I think she's doing a, a great job. Uh, and we're all concerned about the charter school, about the money. And I agree, that's costing us a lot of money. So I started checking, instead of complaining or just accepting it, like my colleagues apparently are. Uh, I started doing some checking, and I, I found out that four hundred and twenty-two school districts, the last one that I checked was, uh, Lord Moreland, have signed, uh, a, a, a resolution calling for the General Assembly to pass charter school funding reform. That's four hundred and twenty-two folks out of five hundred schools. Why isn't Boyertown on there? I'm asking the board president and vice president, along with, uh, our superintendent, to please, uh, try to do something to get us involved. Uh, I think we passed Bill 272 that I'm referring to, uh, and probably our solicitor knows more, uh, and can fill in the gaps. But when I started checking this and, and came to find out, it, you know, these people advertise on television, these charter schools, and they, they go in parades, the Thanksgiving parade. And so in four months, they spent on advertising, so to speak, six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. You know what money that comes from? That comes out of your pocket and mine. That's taxpayers' money. That's money that should be going to our children. And instead, we're giving it to the charter schools and saying, "Thank you." We need to do something. We need to contact our legislators. We need to sign this, get this, uh, uh, get this, uh, resolution going. And I, I can't say enough of how disappointed I am. And I'm disappointed in myself because I should have checked this earlier. I should have been on top of it more. And I wasn't, and I apologize for that. But if they could spend that kind of money, you know, nothing is free. Everybody, "Oh, let's go to charter school. They give you this, they give you that." No. Taxpayers are paying for it. It's not free. Thank you.
Mr. Sotanic, is there something we can, some way we can talk about that and get some information? Do you have any information on, on that resolution? Okay, good. Thanks. That's the right place to go? We'll go to them?
Wonder why they haven't approached us to do this.
Yes, Miss Dearoff.
Yeah, I just wanted to say the PSBA is the one who this is coordinated through. You can look it up. It'll come up real fast. Um, it's one of their legislative priority issues.
I do realize that, but I want to make sure as far as legal side, what, whether the legal aspects to the school in, in going on to a...
I understand.
...into a, a, a...
Right.
You, you can do that, and the SBA has vetted that issue already.
So legally, then, there's no, there's no hindrance to us signing on a petition like that? Okay, good. It's, it sounds like four hundred and twenty-two other boards have already decided that that's a good idea, so.
But that's, that's...
But we can at least, we should at least look at it a little bit more.
I did reach out to our legislators. So, um, that has been submitted multiple times with regards to the reform. And I have also been, um, participating with anything that the Berks County Intermediate Unit has been submitting. But you are correct, Mrs. Dearoff. I will look further into it and I will bring it to the attention of the board. And, um, if that's a resolution that we want to adopt, then we'll go from there.
It, it sounds like, it, it sounds like something we should be looking at. Uh, it, it is a big effect on us, not just the six hundred thousand dollars, but the couple million dollars it costs. Not us, our tax, our, our, our tax-paying people, who, who paid us to educate, and we end up paying it to somebody else higher than what it cost us. So I, I believe it's something we really want to look into. Yes, Miss Dearoff?
I think last year, um, in Pennsylvania, three hundred and seventy-three million went to the Commonwealth, uh, Commonwealth.
Charter.
Oh, and academy. That's a lot of money to...
Okay, Mrs. Nyman. Okay, hold on, just hold on, Ms. Nyman. Mrs. Hogan still following up on this? Okay.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Yeah, so, um, in addition to what the PSBA is doing, the governor has proposed some pretty comprehensive charter school reform, um, in his budget this year. So I would, um, I'd urge everyone to kind of look into that. There's also the House Bill 272, which was introduced by Joe Cerisi, I think is his last name. I always say that wrong. Um, yeah, something like that. But anyway, um, so there is, there is some talk on the Hill. I think it's, this is something that the BCIU talks about often. It's a large problem for every district in the state. Um, I think it's something we should all educate ourselves on. And I agree with, with Mrs. Dearoff. This is something I think that the board should be making moves on. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Nyman.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, Mary Beth, I sent you an article. Maybe you can kind of reach out and talk to everybody about, it's a former high school, um, graduate from Boyertown. Uh, but my one question is on our ESR funds. Do we keep the total of what we've received and what we've spent? And where we're at on that?
Yes, we do.
And, uh, can we get that at some point so we can see what we've been using? If we're on what we have left in it?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Um, and then other than that with the graduate, which I was hoping, um, Mrs. Torsia would, uh, read because it is a graduate of Boyertown.
I can certainly take care of that. So, um, what Ms. Nyman shared with me was, um, on the college corner, Boyertown grad Reinert becomes Alvernia Softball's career hits leader. Um, it was a week of milestones for Alvernia graduate student Sarah Reinert. The Boyertown graduate became Alvernia's all-time hits leader in the second game of a doubleheader with Lycoming College on Sunday at home. Reinert tied the record at two hundred and two with the double to lead off game two.
That was just great for Boyertown to have us put into that article. So, thank her. And that's it.
Okay, with that, uh, Mrs. Torsia.
I'm gonna pass and send it over to Mr. Hemingway. Do you have anything?
No.
Oh, I have nothing else to report other than our upcoming meeting dates?
That's it, that's it.
Yeah, all right. Um, the upcoming meeting dates will be May 10th, committee of the whole. Um, there will be a, um, budget update presented at that time. May 24th is the board of directors meeting, and then we have two meetings on June 14th and June 28th. That's all that I have.
With that, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Updegrove. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.